I want to call to order the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for our regular meeting for December the 12th, 2022. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Chip Pinion for our prayer and pledge. Would you please all stand?
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you tonight for allowing us all to be here. We just thank you for loving us and caring for us and taking care of us each and every day. We just pray you grant us wisdom tonight as we go about the county's business, Father, that you would help us make the right decisions that best affect our dear county. Father, as we're entering into and have been for a while now, this Christmas season, may we be forever mindful of those that are hurting and those in need. Father, may we reach out a hand to help them in any way we can. Father, we just thank you again for all that you do for us. We just have so much to be thankful for. Here's where we value you. Thank you, night, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to.
It's good to see each and every one of you here this evening. We have several items to discuss. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Hattus Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, and we have every member here this evening, ladies and gentlemen, which is something we're very proud of. And you heard a new name there tonight. We have our new commissioner with us, Jim Thompson. Glad to have Jim with us. Jim comes from originally from the Rockvale area. Now he lives out towards Rucker Lane. But Jim comes out of a business that he owned himself, heating and air. I think he worked with gas for a while. So we're glad to have him on here and his knowledge to add to this group right here. Glad to have you with us, Jim. We'll now go to item five, items withdrawn or deferred. Mr. Chairman? Demossi?
Thank you.
I moved you up there tonight.
I saw you promoted me again. Yes, sir. We do have a couple of items that were pulled off the agenda today. One of those is item roman numeral six, C1. That is the Miller Road Storage. There's still some issues being dealt with regarding drainage on that particular issue. So we spoke to the applicant's design engineer earlier today. That has been removed from the agenda. The other item is under rezoning and ordinance amendment requests. This is item three, Charlie B. Mitchell on Shelbyville Pike. This was going from residential medium density. They were asking for a planned unit development for a townhome project. There were a few items that staff had requested as part of the review of the pattern book that we're still not able to obtain. So I got word actually this afternoon, right about lunchtime, that that one had been removed from the agenda. So those are the only two items.
Thank you, sir. And we'll also go to the approval of our minutes, and I'll ask on my vice chairman to do that. They deal with October the 24th and November the 14th. Commissioner Bogle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes of the October 24th meeting as well as the November 14th meeting, and it found both of those to be in good order, and therefore I make a motion to approve.
A motion approved. Do we have a second? Have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The minutes have been approved. We'll move now to item six, six A, submitted for preliminary plan approval. Number one is 12 Corners, Section Three, number 22, 1016, 161 lots on 111.1 acres, zoned RL, located along Pegasus Road, Hollings Hill Land LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. The applicant plans to extend the existing subdivision via Pegasus Run to the east for this new section. This development will also add a new connection onto Rhodes Lane. As far as the staff comments that we had from a planning and engineering standpoint and from a fire and rescue standpoint, those items appear to have been addressed. There is one outstanding item, however, that we would like to have some more discussion on, and that is that connection point to Rhodes Lane. We're glad to see the connection because that gives another way in and out for the subdivision, especially one on the southern side along Rhodes Lane. We think this is a very beneficial connection. That being said, there's been a lot of discussion regarding possible improvements to the Rhodes Lane as far as turn lanes and things go into this development. And they do have a copy of the traffic study from the applicant. I'm going to turn it over to Mike to let him discuss that in a little more detail.
All right. Thank you, Doug. From the traffic study, they came up with two recommendations. You might be able to see the yellow outline of the property, and I'll turn on the aerial imagery to help with that. It's these two big parcels here. This is the Pegasus Run that Doug was talking about. They will connect there. Right now, 12 Corners has a connection on Canesville Pike, but also, bless you, also on 12 Corners. What Doug said, that they will make another connection down here onto Rhodes Lane. The original plan showed another connection in this 90-degree turn right here, but they did not own that parcel, that wedge that would be needed to make a smooth T-intersection. And most likely, if we did make an intersection there, we'd probably look at maybe a three-way stop at that curve. So we asked them to look at these connection points, but also we asked them to look at 12 Corners up to the north. Right here, the main entrance here at Pegasus Run, Rhodes Lane and Canesville Pike down here, but also this awkward intersection at Canesville and Last Cassis Pike. Canesville Pike is State Route 266, and Last Cassis Pike is State Route 96. And we asked them to look at that because it is an awkward intersection, and you can kind of see the alignment is not straight on like you see in a lot of T-intersections. There's a large power pole over here. In addition to having the design team look at it, I've also asked TDOT to look at that as well, to see if they could help us with this intersection, maybe correcting the alignment of this. But with this development, they are proposing, I believe, 167 lots. One of the improvements would be a dedicated left turn, excuse me, right turn lane onto Last Cassis Pike, heading south on Canesville and turning right on the Last Cassis Pike to help with the intersection of these four roads, I guess you should say, coming together. The other intersection of interest was at Rhodes Lane, the new connection point. I can get there, right here. And it's in a tangent section, which is good. But their traffic study came back and said that right now, there's not sufficient oncoming traffic, opposing traffic, I should say, people coming, heading west on Rhodes Lane that would cause people to pause and turn to go north into the new sections of 12 Corners. So that being said, I went and looked at the surrounding land around there. And as it stands, yes, I do agree that right now, there's probably not sufficient traffic, opposing traffic, to cause them to put in a left turn lane. However, if you do look at what's owned by the developer, this is the parcel being developed. This is another part of it here. Well, they also own 230 acres just directly to the east. They own another 100 down here. This is another parcel that they own. So they do plan on doing something with this. Right now, it might not need a turn lane, but I would rather ask for a turn lane to be installed when this section comes in, so we don't have to worry about it down the road. You know, they've got enough land to, you know, you've got several hundred acres of land that they could develop, and that will cause traffic, the opposing traffic that we'll see. So, I mean, we could just say, hey, make it a condition of future approval. Let's kick it down the road. I hope our memory is good enough to remember that, hey, we need to look at this intersection again, and when these do come in, we can look at the traffic loads. But my thought is with these new 167 lots, you're going to have a lot of that traffic using Rhodes Lane. They're not going to go through Pegasus and up and down. They're going to start using Rhodes Lane. So we're going to see more of some of the existing owners back in here will come through this development to get to Rhodes Lane because it'll be a shorter route to get down instead of having to come up and then back down. So that was my thought. Do we need to ask for a turn lane now, or do we just defer it until other items come down the road? But I do agree with them that right now, the opposing traffic's not there, but you've got 300 and something, 350 acres that will cause future traffic. So that's my thought. Do we need to discuss that? Other than that, we can, you know, any hiccups in the design of the preliminary, we can pick up in the construction plan and fine-tune that. But I just wanted to put that out there, that right now, there's not traffic, but with this parcel, this parcel, traffic's going to be there, no's when, but it could be coming.
Commissioners?
Chairman, we, I agree with Mike. Our job as a planning commission is to look to the future. And if, and there's, at the rate Rutherford County is growing, there aren't many places that don't need a turning lane, or in the near future, will need a turning lane.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do agree that probably at this time, the study that they have probably does not warrant a turn lane based on volumes, but looking at the future, I'm curious as to the distance of that next parcel that's to the east, because my thinking is at the minimum, we should at least require right-ofway dedication. So as those are built out, then we have room to require those turn lanes or a three-lane section in the future when it is warranted. I don't think that's accommodated in the plans at this time, but I do think we should at least look at that.
I think they are dedicating some. I was trying to remember how much. Looks like a 30-foot from the center line. Well, yeah.
I think I do see an offset from that smaller parcel that's to the east of there. Is that what I'm seeing? Is the right-ofway dedication for that? Okay.
Right through here, and they're dedicating a little stretch here. But what I was getting at is, I can hand around with this. So this is the big parcel here. This is another part of their parcel. This is another remaining acreage there that they've got stubs into. So I'm just looking out for the future, you know, instead of putting that on burden of the citizens to put it in in the future, go ahead and ask for it now.
Historically, won't it be cheaper on them to put it in now than it will be five to 10 years from now? Historically, five years ago, things would have been a little cheaper than they are now, as far as the paving and construction and all that. Things aren't going down.
That's possibly true. Does the applicant want to have any comments? He's coming up here. Commissioner Kush?
Mr. Chair, we heard from our county engineer. I'd like to hear what Doug's opinion is on the turn lane issue now or later. It can wait till after his discussion.
Chris McGuire with Hudson Steel Engineering. As far as the turn lane being required at this point, we've dedicated the right-ofway. We had an independent third-party traffic engineer come up with a plan, and instead it wasn't warranted at this time, like Mike had said. But you saw all the property that they currently own. There's a potentially three to four new connections that can be made in the future along 12 Corners and again along roads. So some of this point loading that you might be imagining with the future development would actually be dispersed at multiple entrances. And as we get to those sections, as we do now, I'm pretty sure we'll have to have a traffic engineer evaluate the whether a turn lane would be warranted at any of those intersections. So I think at this time, we're wanting to hold off, if we can, just because at the moment, it's just not needed. We're dedicating enough right-ofway. We're in the future, when we do another study in the next developments, that if it is warranted, we have the room to do it. But I'm open to any questions if.
Have you had discussions with TDOT about this?
With TDOT, as far as down at.
Interlet requirements or, no, I mean, at this, let's say Rhodes Lane's not a state route. Sorry, I've jumped off of, are we still on? I'm trying to tie it back together, sorry. Canesville Pike?
Down there, the weird tie.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought this was still Canesville Pike that tied into this.
So, sir. That's where TDOT's was discussed by Mike.
I didn't make the turn. So the reason why I was asking that is because the threshold typically for them is 70 lots would require one. So just trying to use that same logic, but I know it's a county road, so I see a turn lane warranted.
Well, and there's currently three-way.
With the other developments. And the hard part is, these aren't phased. All these parcels are still just parcels. And so trying to look ahead in the future, I do see that if we could, it would be nice to, as these larger parcels come online and are proposed for development, that we could go back and require a turn lane to tie all that together and make it nice and not a piecemeal. It's a little bit better planning, is what I was hoping for. But at least we're getting the right-ofway dedication out of that. But I do think the turn lane will come on, need to come online sooner than later. We can see.
Okay. Mr. Gooch?
I guess this would be my question, on the acreage that the developer still owns that's yet to be developed, if he were to sell that to another developer, and now they develop it, and now we're needing a turn lane, who would be responsible for paying for the turn lane at that time? Would it be the taxpayers?
I won't speak for the county, but I think typically, that would be a developer, once they get a traffic study done, correct?
Right.
Whoever's developing that makes it warranted.
Even though his development is different than the current development?
Yes, sir. Since their additional traffic would warrant the intersection, I think that's how it would typically go. Again, I don't want to speak for the county, but.
So we asked him to look at. Sorry. We asked them to look at various intersections with any new development. So if this property were turned over to a different developer, he wouldn't have to look at each intersection along the way, too. If that's a new intersection that's got a lot of traffic coming through here, that would be one of them that we would ask them to look at. You know, we try to get them to look at from collector to collector, arterial to arterial, you know, each major thoroughfare to major thoroughfare and the roads in between. So that's, you know, when I saw the owner information all around, that's the same developer, same developer, same developer, you know. They own all these parcels around, and they've known on the north side of 12 Corners. So there is, you know, a lot of land that's open for development and looking out for the county residents here.
Any other questions for the applicant? Anyone?
Yes. How many homes, I know the numbers on these, you already have some started, but how many homes are you requesting in this preliminary plan?
It's 167 lots, so there may be a couple.
167 times two cars, sometimes more. I just, we need to be, we don't need to be reactive, we need to be proactive.
If I can just kind of chime in a little bit, Mr. Kush had asked me about my opinion here. Of course, when we're looking at these kind of things, we're always kind of walking a, you know, a fine line between what's reasonable and what might be a little bit of an overstretch. I think an option here may be, especially in light of the traffic study that states as of right now, it's not warranted. As I recall, this particular section where the connection is made is one of the last sections of the development. So the rest of the development's still going to dump onto the existing roads that dumps on now, being 12 Corners or Canesville Pike. A thought would be to possibly look at having them update the traffic study when they get to the construction plans of Phase Two. At that point, there may be some other development plans that are moving forward with some of these other properties, and we'd have some updated traffic counts as well. Because as of right now, I mean, this is, even if they started submitting construction drawings tomorrow, I mean, you're talking sometime next year before they even get started moving dirt. By the time they start getting ready to sell lots and everything, you're still looking at another year or two, probably. So I'm thinking an option may be to, again, as we get the construction plans for section, what is that, Phase Two? Is that what it says, Mike?
Yeah, Phase Two.
Yeah, Phase Two. Updating the traffic study at that point and to see what numbers we get, because that final plat's still going to have to come back before you all for consideration. So that's an option here as well.
That's along the same lines that I was thinking, is wait till a later phase and look at that again and require the turn lane in that later phase after they've built a couple.
And to go along with what the, when Mr. McGuire was up here just a moment ago, and what Mike was saying, yeah, whenever these other tracks, you know, when if they ever develop, you know, we're going to want to see traffic studies for those, and we're going to specifically call out, especially if it's the same developer, I mean, they're pretty much on notice right now. We're going to want to see what impact that might have on the connection, if it's there or proposed yet. But even if they sold it, I mean, whoever bought it and tried to develop it, we're going through the same process as the current developer.
Further discussion, or motion, or any comments? Mr. Kush?
Do we have a ballpark figure on if we were to ask for the turn lane, how much more cost that would be for the developer?
You're probably looking at 200,000 plus.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, what was the staff's recommendation? Was it for the turning lanes?
Well, we wanted more discussion on that. I won't say that we just, I think if we had our druthers, we'd want to see that, but we understand that, you know, they've had the third-party, the traffic study, the independent traffic study that was brought back. So we understand that as of right now, after review, that right now, it's not warranted. So again, we have to kind of be careful on what we require for any kind of approval, which is why I suggested maybe revisiting the traffic study at a later phase may be a better option.
They're going to be building roads that eventually this turn lane would turn into, correct? Correct?
The turn lane would be built on Rhodes Lane. It would be a dedicated left turn lane.
Correct.
They will be building roads into the new subdivision.
Yes, they would be.
And the turning lanes would go into that new subdivision. So they're going to be building new roads. Makes more sense to put them in now. Move to approve with staff comments, including turning lanes, now.
Have a motion and a second. Further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Moving down now to item six B, submit for final plant approval. Item one, Liddy and Percy Brady subdivision, 222086, five lots on seven acres, zoned RM, located along Joe Brown Road. Gail Hunter James and others are the applicant. So waiver for non-billable lots. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. A waiver was granted by the planning commission back in August of 2020, so it's been a little while, to allow this property to be divided into several unbuildable lots. Our understanding is that the land is being divided amongst family members, and everyone understands that as of right now, no houses can be built unless adequate septic soils are found. Most of our comments have been addressed. The only one that was outstanding had to do with fire hydrant placement. Again, these are non-billable lots. They have requested a fire hydrant waiver as part of this. They know they're going to have to come back through. There is an existing house on one of the lots, but I mean, that, two, excuse me, two of the lots, but the remaining are pretty much unbuildable. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, the waiver was approved. I don't know if there's anybody here representing the family or not. No one's raising their hand. I had heard that there may have been a family situation, that someone might not have been able to make it tonight. So with that, again, be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners? Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Have a motion and a second.
With all staff comments, excuse me.
With staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Is approved. Moving now down to South Haven section 13, number 222091, 37 lots on 7.79 acres, zoned PUD, located along Outlook Drive. South Haven Development Group, LLC are the applicants. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for South Haven was approved back in September of 2015. This final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary plan approval. This plan, we did have comments after our first round. They had reviewed our comments and addressed every one of them. I didn't have to send second review comments on this one, so kudos to the engineering firm on that. But with that, everything else is in good order. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments, commissioners?
Seeing none, motion to approve. Staff comments?
Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It is approved. Moving down now to six C, submitted for site plan approval. Number one has been withdrawn. We move into number two, Verizon Wireless Garrison Site 173017. This is new construction of 104-foot communications tower, including lightning rod with accessory structures, equipment shelter on 13.34 acres, zoned RM, located along Twin Oak Drive. Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals granted a special exception for this tower back in April of 2017. The site plan that they have presented tonight is consistent with that approval. The site plan actually did get approved by the planning commission the next month in 2017 in May, but for whatever reason, was never constructed. 2017 in May, but for whatever reason, was never constructed. So the site plan has expired at this point, so they're asking for a reapproval. They have received a no-rise certificate from their engineering study. This was something, because it's in the floodplain, this was something that we had some concerns about. There were also some concerns, and this wasn't a county requirement by any means, but there were some concerns raised by the owner of the property, thinking that the electric lines to serve the tower were going to be underground. The plan that we had showed it as above ground. However, that was a misunderstanding on the engineer's part when they resubmitted the plans. They've addressed that. Again, that wasn't a requirement. That was something that was brought to the attention of the commissioner of that district and then was brought to my attention as well. I just wanted to make sure that got on the record that they have fixed that. So beyond that, I mean, this meets our requirements, it's in good order, just a matter of reapproval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mister, questions or comments?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion made to approve with staff comments. Second has been made also. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? It approved. We'll move now into D, rezoning ordinance and amendment request. All rezoning requests, ordinance agreements, with exception of subdivision regulations, amendment requests will be considered at the January 12, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or applicant. We'll move in first with D1, Jeffrey D. Turner, REZ 22028, located on 93779391 Franklin Road. Commissioner is Pettis Reed. Size of site is approximately 4.4 acres. Existing zoning is residential, medium density, and proposed zoning is commercial services. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Information provided by the applicant, and I see he's present, states they'd like to build, does own the property for business rental, he'd like to build a pre-engineered building in the range somewhere around 10,000 to 15,000 square feet. Does not have an end user at this point, but feels the zoning is consistent with several of the properties in the area. Mike will bring up the zoning of the property here, and if you look at your agenda packets, you'll see that there are quite a few commercially zoned properties, commercial services as a matter of fact, in the vicinity of this particular piece of property. He does understand that an engineered site plan would have to be submitted for any approval prior to construction beginning. The applicant did provide a letter kind of going into a little bit more detail in your agenda packets, I'll let you refer to that, it's on your iPads. The property currently has access and will continue to have access onto Franklin Road. The number of required parking spots, parking lot design, et cetera, would be determined by the zoning ordinance and shown on an engineered site plan should this be approved, which would include a truck turning template if we felt one was necessary. They have not done a traffic study at this point, but there's no real use identified, so it wouldn't make much sense to do it at the moment. But we are able to require one if we feel one is necessary. Of course, Franklin Road is a state route, State Route 96, so any improvements to that access or anything would have to be approved by T.DOT. Properties located in Commercial Services District are required to provide a Type 2 buffer along any residentially zoned property line, so you'll see that's pretty much to the east-west and to the south that you can see on there. So he would require a Type 2 buffer on that property. Again, we would see that on an engineered site plan, and they would also have to meet our performance standards. As I alluded to earlier, there have been several non-residential rezonings in this area over the last 10 years. There are plans to widen Franklin Road to five lanes, although there's not a specific timeframe at this time. We do feel that this is consistent with the land use patterns in this area and with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, and we do recommend approval. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, the applicant is present.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Not, we'll ask for the applicant to come forward this time. Give us your name, please.
Jeff Turner.
Okay, sir.
I'm here to answer any questions I can.
You want to have any questions for Mr. Turner?
There a specific intent that you have in mind for this property?
No, sir, not at the moment, understanding that it's going to take lead times on everything. We thought it would be better to get the zoning approval before we started zeroing in on that.
Speculative.
Yes, sir. Engineers and the Planning Commission would have to.
Question, is this property on sewer or will that need to have septic system in?
It has a current septic system, and I don't know of the schedule for sewer on that area at the current time.
Yeah, there's no sewer out there right now, but there is a six-inch water line that backs up to it now. Of course, they'll have to, if this is approved and they submit a site plan, they'll have to meet, you know, whatever the fire code and whatever CUD would require of them, of that.
Have you received, have you received any calls or opposition to this?
I did get one phone call that I can remember, there may have been one or two just for general information. The one call I do remember, he just, it was actually an adjacent property owner, was just kind of curious about what the layout of the property may be, which I told him at this time, he doesn't really have one. So I wouldn't say that they were opposed to it, they didn't say that, and I'm not sure if they're here tonight to speak, but they, I think it was more general information and concern about what he was wanting to build.
Okay, nothing else, we will open it up for a public hearing. You may be seated, Mr. Turner. Well, opened up for a public hearing. Just a reminder, those who are coming forward, we'll give you three minutes to express your opinion, either for or against, and I'll be keeping time, and I will now open it for public hearing. Anyone may come forward at this time. Think I see one coming forward. Could you give us your name and address for the record?
I own the property next to you, and I was just curious of what was being proposed for it other than a zoning change, because we haven't seen any activity over there.
Let you come up here, because we can't hear you out there, and the public sure can't hear you.
Yes, sir. I don't have a current plan, other than just knowing it takes a couple of years to get to this type building, multi-purpose, some kind of storefront.
Concerned on if we're going to have a party barn there or what, because of the shape of the lot and whatnot, and in the buffer, we were wondering about the buffer, how that was going to be around us as well.
I actually came to your house a little ways. Yeah, I don't have any to use, we will have to follow the buffers and with. Very, very professional, like to address that area. Because of the septic system, we're going to be limited in number of users, so we know we can take one of the 10,000-foot type building, we'll be maximizing it together, it's pretty rocky, but it's got some good characteristics there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I'll address the buffering after the public hearing to help you with that.
Anyone else? If not, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, your staff?
And if I, yeah, and I'll address the buffering of the property. As I stated in the staff report, this is a Type 2 buffer, which would be required against residentially zoned property should this be approved. There are three levels of buffers that the county has, 1, 2, and 3. 2 is kind of the middle of the road. So what that would require would be a minimum of a 30-foot buffer with vegetation, or it could be as, it could be shrunk down to, reduced to a 15-foot buffer if they use a solid visual screen like a privacy fence. They would still have to provide a certain amount of plantings even with the reduced buffer with the fence, just not as many. The trees are cut in half and the shrubs are removed. But if they decided to go with a 30-foot buffer, they would just have to do all trees and shrubs, there'd be more of a requirement there. Now, as you look at that property, you can tell that there's a good amount of trees and material already on the property that can be utilized for part of the site. Developer could look at that and say, I'm just going to leave this alone and utilize that as part of the buffer. They'd have to confirm that the material there met the requirements of the ordinance, again, through the landscape plan. But, yeah, that's what we'd be looking at for a buffer on that side.
Any other questions? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if the staff have a recommendation, Doug?
Yes, sir, we did recommend approval. Subject, well, you know, like our normal.
Very good. And if you contacted the commissioner in that area, does he have a recommendation?
I tried calling him, he never calls me back, I don't know.
The commissioner is okay with it.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Kim Aberwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kusch.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion does carry. We'll move down now to D2. John Harney, Thor Sport Incorporated, REZ 22029. Location 2951 Armstrong Valley Road. Commissioner is Pettis Reed. Size of site approximately 44 acres. Tax map 137, parcels 29 and 29.03. Existing zones residential, medium density, RM. Proposed zoning agricultural residential. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Information provided by the applicant states that they would like to operate a large animal veterinary practice on the subject properties. I copied and pasted a blurb, if you will, paragraph from the description that the applicant's representative sent. I'm not going to read that verbatim. The applicant's representative, Mr. Harney, is present. I'm sure he'll be happy to go into any more detail if you have questions about that. This particular use, which we would consider a large animal vet, similar to what you said earlier, is classified under agricultural sales and services in our zoning ordinance. Now, this is not allowed in the RM district. It is, however, allowed in the agricultural residential district, AR district, by special exception. Since these properties are both greater than five acres in size, they do qualify for the AR zone. The applicant does understand that if this application is approved, that they will also have to apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception for the specific use. So I just want to be clear to the Planning Commission that the rezoning of the property will not approve the business. The specifics are just given to you for background to why they're making this request. The properties currently do have access onto Armstrong Valley Road. Any new access drives, improvements, whatnot, along a county road would have to be approved by the county highway department, excuse me. The Board of Zoning Appeals also, as part of the special exception process, can require additional parking if they deem it necessary. AR zoned properties are also not required to install any buffers adjacent to any other residentially zoned property, but again, the BZA can place reasonable restrictions on special exception applications if they feel it's necessary. And performance standards generally do not apply, but again, the BZA can place reasonable restrictions on that. Rezoning the property to AR is consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, again, because the zoning, even if it's approved, does not mean that the BZA application for a large animal veterinarian will be approved. So even if this were to be rezoned and that application were to fail, there would be no impact to the surrounding area. This is a down zone. The AR requires one unit per five acres versus the RM, which is one unit per, or one, three units per acre. So this is a down zone. So with all that being said, staff is comfortable with this and does recommend approval of the request. We did get a few phone calls on this, most of them were just general information. Really, after I explained the request, most people didn't have any issues with it whatsoever. So with that, again, Mr. Harney is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments, commissioners? If not, I'll ask the applicant to come forward at this time. Good evening, sir.
My name's John Harney, I'm here on behalf of Thor Sport Farm, representing them on this request. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Thor Sport Farm, the main entrance is out on Barfield Road. It's 300-plus acres now, probably one of the nicest horse facilities this side of Lexington, Kentucky. And they're, in doing everything by the letter, they are wanting to add veterinary services, large animal horse veterinary services to the farm. And I have with me tonight Allison Thorson, who owns Thor Sport Farm, Dr. Blake Everett, they're veterinarian on staff now, and Aaron Self, who's their farm manager. But the narrative that I sent over to Doug, and I think it's in your packet pretty well, explains all the aspects of the facility they want to build, but it's being built to service what their large animal horse veterinary clinic work that they're already doing for their own animals on the farm, which is allowed. They've got 100-plus horses on the farm now, and really nice operation, and they're just trying to do a better job of what they've already done, an excellent job building so far. But certainly glad to answer any questions. We understand we've got to go to BZA once we get this zoned, that's the next step. But it is, it will be an asset, just like the rest of that facility is right now. Certainly glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Harney? Mr. Kusch?
John, will the entire 44 acres be utilized, or do they just need a piece of that?
Well, it's contiguous, this 34 acres is contiguous to the rest of the farm. Now, farm manager, Mr. Self, lives in the house there. He's the farm manager, but in talking with Doug, it made sense just to take this parcel and ask for the AR on it. But, you know, it's contiguous to the rest of the farm, they're interconnecting it with all the horse facility over on Barfield Road.
If not, thank you, sir. We'll now go into the public hearing. Remember, you have three minutes to talk. I'll open it. Anyone that'd like to make a comment, either for or against, may come forward at this time. Public hearing is open. Seeing no one coming forward, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, floor is now open.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with all staff comments.
Motion's been made to approve. Got a second? I've got a couple of seconds. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Kim Aberwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kusch.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Carries. Item 3 has been withdrawn.
Chairman, could I ask one quick question? When will that go before BZA?
It'll depend on when they make their application. I don't believe they made it for January, so the earliest it would be February at this point.
So it probably, this, this will.
Well, actually, let me back up. They need to go through the county commission before they make the application, sorry. So it would probably be at the earliest, it would be February before they would get on the BZA, excuse me.
So it'll go before the county commission in January, and then if it's approved, it'll go BZA?
Correct, yes.
Correct, and these two that have been proved tonight will go before the full county commission, January the 12th. That's when they'll be going for the commission. All right, we'll move down to now to item 4. Subdivision Regulation Amendments, ORD 22005. Amendments to Article 2E, Planning Commission Action, Allowing Staff to Administerably Approve Minor Final Plats of Five Lots or Less Provided That No Waivers Are Required. Planning staff is the applicant. Mr. Demossi. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This should look familiar. This is something we've actually talked about in the past. Previous Tennessee state law granted the ability for jurisdictions to allow administrative approval for subdivisions of no more than two lots, provided no waivers were required. Public Chapter 994 was approved by the Tennessee General Assembly earlier this year, which does allow jurisdictions to grant administrative final plat approval to staff under the following conditions, and you'll see those listed in your staff comments there on your iPads. Staff made a presentation regarding this to the planning commission back in June. Our recommendation was only to allow administrative approval of final plats that did not require preliminary plan approval and did not require any waivers. So the only change to our current procedure would be changing the number that we currently are allowed to do from two lots to five lots. And again, that would be assuming that there were no waivers required. The planning commission felt this was reasonable, asked staff to bring this forward for a public hearing. I have included a couple of attachments for you. One of them is a copy of the resolution that I presented before Public Works last week, which will be going to the county commission coming up this week. This is because the law requires that any administrative approval has to be granted by the jurisdiction's legislative body. That was something that was new, that wasn't in the law previously. The other item that I have included is just a, what the change in the regulations would actually look like. And this is really just dealing with what would be considered a partition, which would change the number, again, administratively, from two lots to five lots, not requiring public facilities, public utility extensions. Of course, those are excluding private service lines. And anything that would require a waiver would be deemed either a minor or major subdivision amendment, would require planning commission approval. So that's just kind of an overview of the process that we're looking at. I'll be happy to answer any questions. This is a subdivision regulation change beyond the resolution that does have to go before the county commission later this week. The actual changes to the subdivision regulations themselves stay at the planning commission.
One quick question, Mr. Chairman. Doug, about how many times last year would that have occurred? I don't think it happens that often, but just a half a dozen times or so, correct?
Yeah, I remember putting some information together. It does reduce it just a little bit, but it's not. I'd say, you know, 10 to 15 maximum. It's not many. But again, that's only if there's no waiver. Now, sometimes we'll see them that they require like a fire hydrant waiver, off-site soils or something like that. We wouldn't do those administratively. Those would have to come before you, as they do. These would be the ones that there is, the only reason they're coming before you in the first place is because of the number of lots being, you know, three or four or five. That's the only reason they're coming before you. Everything else is addressed.
And these usually are family situations in most cases.
Some of them are, not all. I mean, there are some where somebody just has a tract of land and they're trying to get a few lots out of it for development. But the vast majority of the larger ones we see for development are going to be, you know, ones that are going to come before you. But yes, the small family ones would be included in this.
Just another quick follow-up to that. If there is one that's five or less, and you have questions or concerns about it, would you still go ahead and make a decision on it, or would you want to bring that to the planning commission?
Well, I think if there's something, if we have questions or concerns about, then there's probably some sort of a question as to whether or not it meets the regulations and requires some sort of a waiver or something to that. I think at that point, we'd still want to bring those to the commission. But yeah, most of the ones that we don't see many in that type of situation, they're generally pretty cut and dry.
Other questions? If not, we'll open this up for the public hearing at this time. Anyone that is either for or against may come forward or have comments. We ask that you come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Further comments or a motion?
And I would, before any motions made, I would say that I would make a contingent upon the county commission approving the resolution at Thursday's meeting, because if they don't, then we'll just continue doing things the way we've been doing them.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pass this forward to the county commission and recommend their approval.
Motion made. Commissioner Aberwater, have a second. Have a second. Commissioner Pinion, please call the roll.
Jim Aberwater. Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Charlotte P. Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones. Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson. Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Move now down to D5. Subdivision Regulations Amendments, ORD 22006. Amendments to Article 1 regarding right-of-way dedication for new developments and subdivisions. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The Tennessee, excuse me, the Tennessee State Legislature over the last few years has been considering a bill regarding dedication of right-of-way for new development that planning commissions consider. And this is not just counties. This would be for counties or municipalities. The issue before the legislature was whether government should be allowed to require right-of-way dedication for new development without providing compensation. After several attempts to pass this bill, and again, this isn't something, this has been over the course of several years, the state legislature sent the matter to what's called TASSER, which stands for the Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, a further study. I did include in your agenda packet what's called an insight article on this particular piece of legislation, just to give you an overview of what the law ended up passing would require, just because it did a whole lot better job explaining it than I could. In a nutshell, TASSER recommended that state legislator codify in Tennessee state law what are called constitutionally based standards established and applied by the U.S. Supreme Court for these types of dedications. We have had several conversations with our county attorney on this matter, and I'll let him chime in on this if he feels the need to. But what we're proposing to do is add the following language that's in your agenda packets there to our subdivision regulations. And you can, like I said, I'm not going to read that verbatim. We propose to put this in Article 1, Section 3, C, excuse me, which is under authority. It's our belief this will not materially affect how the planning commission operates on these issues. It's really just a minor modification of the language that takes place when we look at this. And, no, I'm sorry, excuse me. We did make some minor modifications to what the model language said, and I think what we're proposing there is pretty good. I don't think we have any more issues with that. But basically, all this is saying is that, you know, when we look at dedications and things like that of right-of-way and whatnot, you know, we have to make sure there's what's called a rational nexus. In other words, it makes sense to the development being proposed, and that it's roughly proportional, what we're asking for is roughly proportional to the impact that the development is making. So with that, again, I'll turn it over to Nick if he has any comments on this or any questions that he'd like to answer. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If there are no questions, I'll move it to public hearing. Got to go there first. All right, I'm opening public hearing. Anyone that is either for or against or would like to make a comment may come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearings. Now it's open for comments.
Going to need a little more explanation on this.
I'll chime in. What does this specifically change in ours? How is this changing ours? We require dedication, and the new law says you can't require dedication?
No, it allows you to make dedications. What it's stating that we have to put into our regulations is that those dedications have to be related to the impact that's being created by that development and has to be proportional to the impact that's being created. In other words, if someone's putting in, I'm just going to use some numbers. Let's say someone wants to subdivide six or seven lots off of a, off of a road. And we say, "Well, before you do that, you have to widen four miles worth of road to do that." That's not proportional to the impact that's being created, nor is there really any kind of a relationship between what they're doing and what you're asking for. Now, taking a larger subdivision, for example, and let's say there's a traffic study involved that says, "Hey, yeah, they need to put in some turn lanes here and some other improvements." At that point, those have, I believe, meet those tests. They're proportional to what they're asking for, and they're related to what they're asking for. Nick, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. So the principles that Doug's describing, they're already existing law. So case law has already laid out these standards that Doug's describing. What the legislature did was codify that and has mandated local governments to expressly put that in your subdivision regulations so that it's explicitly stated. And that italicized language there is what the legislature has says that we have to put in our regulations. Even though we've already been following that, and that's what we do whenever we analyze this stuff, it's just got to be in writing.
Who makes that judgment on what is comparable?
Yeah, you guys do that every, every time you pass on an application, you're just subconsciously doing it, right? So when we're looking at the proposed impact of development and the necessary improvements that we're requiring, you're generally, you're doing that, right? And if there's ever requests made that are maybe outside of those bounds, your staff is probably telling you, "We probably can't do that." It's naturally occurring in your decision-making process already.
Does that help clear it up? Okay. Appreciate you asking a question.
Doug, in the example you just gave, though, about peeling six lots off, and we said you have to improve the whole road four miles down, isn't that exactly what a traffic shed does? Sort of, kind of?
You mean a traffic study or a traffic shed?
No, the traffic, like Williamson County, when we had, doesn't a traffic shed do that? Say if you want to, in around.
Well, maybe. Now, there's, I think there's a little more nuance to it than that. Now, every tract has the ability to say, "You can divide your property into so many lots without having to make improvements." Or if you want more lots, you have to make those improvements. Now, in that situation, what I used, six lots or whatever it was.
Yeah.
It may not have risen to that level anyway.
Not the same. Okay, so this inadvertently does not outlaw. A traffic.
No, absolutely not. No. It's like Nick said, this is already, this is already existing case law that's been decided by the U.S. Supreme Court. There's a couple of cases, Dolan and Nolan are the two that you may hear in planning circles. Those were both decided, if I remember, back in the 90s. But, so it's something that we already are doing. It's just, this was TASSER's recommendation, and this is what ended up being approved by the state legislature, as Nick said, that we have to put something actually in the regulations to state that.
So in Doug's example of six lots, a lot of times the old deeds would go to the center line of the road. The county would maintain the road as a prescriptive easement, but in that subdivision of that land, we would ask for at least 25-foot of right-of-way dedication on the development side.
Yeah, just in lieu of the prescriptive easement, it just becomes right-of-way. We're not asking for additional right-of-way outside of that.
Right, for maintenance of the road, the drainage, adjacent drainage, anything like that, clear zone to keep traffic safe.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Aberwater, call the roll.
Jim Aberwater. Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush. Lee Bogle. Charlotte P. Trey Gooch. David Jones. Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson. Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right, this only required the planning commission's approval. It does not go to the full commission. Right, we move now to D6. Subdivision Regulation Amendment, ORD 22007. Amendments to Article 3, D4, Regarding Fire Hydrant Spacing 500 Feet Versus 1,000 Feet and Minimum Fire Flow Requirements of 1,000 Gallons a Minute Versus 500 Gallons Per Minute. Damasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Staff has been in discussion with Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Personnel and CUD about possible changes to the subdivision regulations for consistency with the adopted fire code. I did attach a copy of Appendix B of the 2018 International Fire Code for your, for your reference. I'm going to turn this over to Josh Sanders, our fire marshal, and Larry Farley, our fire chief, is also in attendance as well. Our current county regulations require that fire hydrant has to be located within 1,000 feet of all residential lots. Due to the provisions in the adopted fire code, we are proposing a couple of changes in here. For subdivisions of six lots or greater, we would propose to change the minimum fire hydrant distance from the current 1,000 to 500 feet, and then change the minimum fire flow of the water lines from the current 500 gallons per minute to 1,000 gallons per minute. Again, I'll let Josh and Larry kind of go into the intricacies of the fire code. Again, that would only be for subdivisions of six lots or greater. Now, for subdivisions of five lots or less, we would keep the existing regulations in place. Again, the 1,000-foot minimum spacing of the hydrants and also the minimum 500 gallons per minute for the fire flow in the water lines. We're also proposing to change our current requirement of residential sprinkler systems for subdivisions of three lots or greater that require a fire hydrant waiver to coincide with the changes that we just made regarding the number of lots we can approve administratively. So right now, if we see anything greater than two lots that comes in and needs a fire hydrant waiver, they have to, if they're granted a waiver, they do have to install residential sprinkler systems into those houses, not the, if there's any existing houses, those don't have to be retrofitted, it's just any new houses. What we would propose is kind of raising that just a little bit to go from anything, anything greater than two lots to anything greater than five. So six lots or greater, that would coincide with, again, some of the changes that we're proposing and have proposed to make with the number of lots we can approve administratively. Should the planning commission approve these changes, I will say that a separate resolution would be needed to prepare, we'd need to prepare one for action by the county commission on the sprinkler requirement. TCA does require any mandatory sprinkler requirement for one-family, two-family dwellings be approved by that jurisdiction's legislative body. Amendments in and of themselves, outside of that, would just stay here at the planning commission. They don't move forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and/or Larry to talk a little bit more about the fire code, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions from there.
Thank you, Doug. Just to kind of give some recap and context, where this all came about was when my position was established in 2021. Part of what I did was to come in and to review our current regulatory documents, ensure they're in consistency with each other. One thing that we discovered was that the adopted fire code, specifically Appendix B of the fire code, was in conflict with the subdivision regulations that you're being presented right now. So the current regulations in Appendix B places a minimum fire flow of 1,000 gallons per minute on residential construction. That standard, obviously being an international one, and is consistent with all our surrounding jurisdictions, Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, and even several others out of the county. That standard, it obviously takes into consideration building square footage. The prior requirement of 500 gallons per minute was based on the CUD's ability to service a hydrant, amongst some other requirements. But basically, the minimum of 500 gallons per minute was based on the fact that they would not place a hydrant on a line that could not provide at least 500 gallons per minute. Did not really have any direct impact on the effectiveness of firefighting operations. The Appendix B standard does take into consideration building construction type as well as square footage to give us a more effective means of ensuring that our firefighters have what they need to effectively and safely fight these fires. I'll ask Chief Farley to come up if he would like and just speak on how that affects from an operational standpoint. I'll take off my coat hat for a moment. You know, obviously, largely, this measure is housekeeping to make sure that we're in consistency, and we don't expose the county to any potential conflicts as it relates to projects that are coming in that may have some discrepancy. Well, the subdivision regulations require this, but the fire code's requiring that. Obviously, as a fire marshal, I'm required to uphold the requirements of the fire code. And so that's where most of this is coming from, just making sure we can get some consistency on that. You know, taking off my coat hat for a second and just putting on my firefighter hat, you know, this, outside of the consistency, this definitely is a tremendous consideration for our firefighters' ability to do their jobs. You know, we want to be able to ensure that they have what they need to safely and effectively fight fire, and obviously looking at the public safety aspects of that. As the county grows, it's been mentioned multiple times tonight, as it typically is during our planning commission, you know, looking to the future and ensuring that, you know, we are doing what we can to address the rate of growth at the county scene, and looking to be more, as proactive as we can instead of reactive. So, I think those comments were even made this evening. But ultimately, I'll ask Chief Farley to come up and speak as it pertains specifically to firefighting operations, if he don't mind coming up.
Chief?
One of the biggest factors we've had is fighting fire in the county, there's not a whole lot of hydrants in a lot of the subdivisions. When I first, we first took over and started the fire department, I come up here before this commission and ask you to place fire hydrants as the truck drives and not as the crow flies. As I explained, the five-inch supply line that we use to hook the hydrants, just one section of 100 feet is like 150 pounds, so it's not easily dragged across somebody's yard. And so a lot of times, we may, we have to lay out sometimes anywhere from 15 to 2,000 feet, and it takes every, just about every supply hose we have off four or five of our trucks on the scene. It also does supply our firefighters with a lot more safety with the fire flow. Of course, the more water you have, the better, more effective we can be on fighting fires. So it's just that, it's that simple.
And to further elaborate, with the hydrant spacing, that's also currently what the adopted code states in Appendix C with regard to hydrant spacing, and obviously what we're looking at trying to make this as reasonable as possible with putting this in for larger subdivisions, larger developments, but that is also codified in the International Fire Code that's adopted for the county.
I would like to take this opportunity, too, to come in. Consolidated, since we started this, they've done a tremendous job upsizing lines, providing more water to more locations in the county. They've even gone to the extent to put hydrants with a stork connection on it, and what that does, from a three-inch connection, it actually allows us to directly hook the hydrant with a five-inch connection without having to put an adapter on it, so it's a lot quicker. But maybe upsized a whole lot of the lines and done a tremendous job, I think, keeping up with growth of the county. So I hope y'all will consider passing this.
Any questions for these individuals? I have one question I want to ask our Fire Marshal. What we're, let me get this straight, basically what we're talking about, we're just trying to bring our code up to what everyone else's code.
Well, yes, and to clarify further, really trying to make sure our subdivision regulations match the code, which is consistent with where everybody else is at. Yes, sir?
Okay. So we're talking about safety is what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, and, yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Kush?
If we, and this is Joshua, this for you and to Farley. If you doubled the fire hydrant space, can you do that and still do what you need to do without increasing from 500 to 1,000?
Well, we're actually taking the far space and just make sure I'm clarifying this appropriately.
I guess the question is, why do you have to?
We're going from 1,000 to 500 in these larger developments, so we're not increasing the distance, we're reducing it, and I may have under misunderstood what you stated.
Yeah, so you're doubling the fire hydrants, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But if we do that, do you still need, or can you still get by with a 500-gallon limit versus upping to 1,000?
That's a good question. I'm going to suggest that that's not the case. We need to look at the metrics that are set up in Appendix B, really look at the water flow, the fire flow, excuse me, as it pertains to the size of a structure. So the 500 really, when we look at firefighting operations and we look at what a hydrant can provide, we teach our firefighters that a 500-gallon per minute hydrant is really not the best thing to hook up to. And in some cases, we look at, you know, maybe that maybe a water shuttle may be sufficient or more sufficient in those types of situations than a low-flow hydrant. When we look at what we're looking at here, the 1,000 is going to be, regardless of how many hydrants there is, it's really, once you're in that line on that hydrant, you're going to get the same flow regardless. So we want to see that higher flow to, A, be consistent with the fire code, but also make firefighting operations more effective and safe.
All right. Chief said that, you know, CUD's doing a good job increasing their line size, so they're putting more water, I'm assuming, okay, hydraulics is not my strong suit, but, so I'm assuming when you turn the nut, you have the potential of getting more water out of a hydrant.
As, and I won't, excuse me, and I won't speak specifically to their business, but I know that as they make improvements to areas, we're going to see, you know, potential increases in the available fire flow, available water flow gallons per minute in certain areas. So, yes, as they make improvements to the lines and to their pressure zones, and if, you know, I can defer to them on exactly what those plans are. I know they're actively looking at different areas of the county that are underserved from a flow standpoint, but they do a fantastic job on that. But as they make improvements to those areas, then we will see the increase in those flows.
Okay. So I guess my question is, we, up to this point, we have, quote, "had a 500-gallon minimum", right? But it could very well, when you crank it open, you could be shooting 1,000 or 1,500 gallons out.
Depending on the area, absolutely.
Right? So, the same would apply in the populated part, right? But as you get out in the rural areas, it's probably where you're losing the potential for the amount of water you're able to put out.
I would say that's accurate, yes, sir.
Okay. So, I guess the tough question is, do you have empirical data that shows that 500 hasn't been enough? And, I mean, are we losing lives, losing structures? And I remember Chief Farley said, when he came several years ago and said, "as the crow flies, not as the truck flies", we also made it a point, we're not really interested in saving structures, we're interested in saving lives.
That's right.
So, can you tell us that 500 is inadequate and that we've cost lives because of it, and it needs to be more than 500?
I don't have any specific examples of where we've lost lives. I know we have lost lives in this county as related to fire, and that's due to a number of variables, you know, in some cases, multiple variables. What I will say is that the International Fire Code is an international standard, and it is, and even, I'll even, you know, you could ask Director Bell, as far as even from her, the codes that she applies. The codes that we look at are considered bare minimum standards. It's the minimum standard that we can enforce. It's not the maximum standard, and it's not even the medium standard. We enforce a minimum standard, and so I think the data that is presented in Appendix B presents just that, that the 1,000 gallon per minute is considered a minimum standard by a consensus of those who put the International Fire Code document together. I think we can look at the simple fact that, you know, more water is always beneficial in a firefighting situation. NFPA also did a study on planning models to designate fire flows. They found that most of the planning models, which IFC being one example, most of the planning models presented very conservative numbers with regard to fire flow. They found that in many cases, that the fire flow was actually greater on the scene than even what the planning models were. So I can certainly point to that, and then also that the minimum standard that the fire code itself is, which allows us, you know, hopefully makes those decisions.
Mr. Chairman, Doug, if we were to approve a subdivision way out in the outer rings and the lines were not, could not support fire hydrants, and we put in sprinkler systems, would this change that in any way?
I don't believe so. Now, I think, you know, Josh and I, and Larry, we'd have to kind of figure out how that's going to look moving forward, but at the same time, like I had mentioned earlier, if we make any changes to a mandatory sprinkler requirement, that's a separate resolution that has to be presented to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration. So regardless of what happens tonight, if there are changes made that have to be made to the sprinkler requirement, those will go to, those won't come here, those will go to the, straight to the Board of Commissioners.
This might be a good time for me to get started, Pettis, I've not said anything all night. Got my first call in regards to this very thing here, and after I've called everybody involved, I've had opportunity to communicate, and I'd have to conclude, and I'll give you a little background, I've been to the NFPA building in Washington, DC, I have served on the NFPA 54, natural gas codes and standards, familiar with processes. And what Josh is doing is attempting to follow the law that we have apparently approved, but yet we can't live by what we approved without a sprinkler system. This is serious where we're at on this one, to me. We're asking a lot of things to happen. Let me tell you what I would say, that I personally want to know. What was the old code standard? I don't know what the old code standard was, and why didn't we adopt the code and exclude this particular section in this county until we could get better plans in place to be able to meet the standard and then adopt this part of the code? We have that right to do that. So why didn't that take place? Can we go back and approve what we can live by until CUD is capable of meeting the standards that our firefighters need? That's one question. To answer the question on the impact of what this will do for our building, we're talking about 50% of the homes out in the county are talking about needing sprinkler systems. It's exactly what Doug's saying. This is probably the most significant piece of conversation that I've watched on TV, and now I'm glad to be a part of this conversation. We're not ready for this as a county. CUD's not ready for this. And as a taxpayer, I'm certainly not in favor of a sprinkler system, having been born and raised in this county. I remember December the 21st, 1989, where we had 40 below windshield factors in this county. And if you lived out west side of Highway 96, we shut the gas off because we couldn't maintain Folks didn't have heat out there. That's a fact. At any rate, this one needs more discussion. It impacts everybody in this room. When I moved home in 2002, I was asked the question, what did I see as the most significant issue in Rutherford County? I said fire protection. We're depending on volunteer firefighters to put out a fire. We've made great strides. Larry Nim's done a great job, Josh, no doubt you're doing a great job as well. All Josh is doing is saying, y'all have given me a law here that I've got to follow. But folks, we can't follow this law the way it is without mandating sprinklers. And I'm not a sprinkler guy personally, so I'll be quiet.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. In the past, we had referred to and had a great discussion in the "as the truck rolls" rule, and we established it was 1,000 feet. So, in my mind, it was always if your lot was within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant, you were good. But the way I'm kind of reading this as being written is we're going to a 500-foot spacing. Now, I'm kind of interpreting spacing as to be 500 feet between hydrants. It doesn't say spacing from the lot, it says 500. So then, instead of 1,000 foot from the lot, which would be 2,000 feet between fire hydrants, we're going to 500 feet, which is a four times the increase. The way I'm reading the terminology here, is that not correct? Am I missing something here? Because we would be 250 feet from a lot then, instead of 1,000 feet from a lot, and that's a huge increase.
No, I mean, I think, I mean, based on what discussions we've had, I mean, I think what you're saying is accurate.
Yeah, that, excuse me, that is accurate. What we're talking about though is in large subdivisions, not looking at this for impacting anything less than five lots or less, so it would be six lots or greater is where this would apply. And so spacing for, you know, rural areas, for lower residential density areas, would still be at that 1,000-foot spacing.
As the truck rolls, as we isn't as the truck?
Yes, sir, that's accurate. It's, the way the code reads, it's spacing as defined by the AHJ, so that, in our case, that would be as the truck drives, so it would be on the street.
Jim?
You're asking for 250 feet as the truck rolls.
To a structure, yes, sir, to a building, to a residence in this case, the spacing between the hydrants should be at 500 feet.
And that's not even to the lot line, that's to the actual structure, is what you're asking for.
I would have to look at the languages specifically, but it's typically to the frontage of the road, so I believe it is the lot line, if I'm not mistaken. I can clarify that, though, but the biggest thing we're focusing on is the spacing between hydrants in these larger subdivisions.
And I'll kind of, you know, piggyback on what Josh was saying about looking at this more in the larger subdivisions, of course, and we've all seen the trends of the different plan developments that we've been getting, the smaller lots, closer spacing together as far as those houses go. That was why, when we started talking about this, we thought, maybe this is something we just look at in those larger, major subdivisions from a safety standpoint, just because the houses are becoming, again, closer together, just due to the fact that your setbacks are a little less in most plan developments, and the lots aren't as wide. You know, if you're in an area that has, you know, again, these smaller subdivisions, five, four, three lots, whatever they are, generally they're going to be at least 15,000 square feet, sometimes they're over an acre, depending on where they're zoned. The spacing isn't as critical there because the houses are farther apart. So that was kind of the direction that we were going, to try to address some of those concerns.
Doug just stated what I had in mind, is that as people move in, you know, houses are closer together, and there are large houses closer together, so the need for the hydrants to be closer is there. And, you know, no one's going to argue this when it's your home and your family trapped in the house.
Mr. Ever?
Mr. Chair, I believe we're supposed to have a public hearing. I'd like to hear from some others before we get in too deep off into a discussion, any deeper than we already are.
Yes, we'll do that. I was just, Commissioners, are you?
Can I get one quick question? What size water line are we talking about to provide 1,000 gallons a minute?
I'll defer to CUD on that, sir. I'll have to defer to CUD on that, let them speak to their own infrastructure.
Two eggs won't cut it.
No, sir, it will not.
We're preparing for the public hearing. I'll now call the public hearing in session. You have three minutes, or are you speaking for a group? Okay, come forward. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Good question, and you need to answer it.
So, I'm Alan Stemke with Consolidated Utility District, I'm the Director of Engineering, and I'll give you the legal answer, it depends. Generally speaking, I would say an eight-inch line is going to be sufficient most of the time, but it does depend on the pressure and the distance, you know, you are from a tank, and what the hydraulics are between the tank and the subdivision where the fire hydrant is being used. So it's not something that you can really give a blanket answer that applies all the time, but, you know, generally speaking, I would say eight inches is going to be sufficient.
Okay, sir, thank you. If there's anyone who would like to make comments, either for or against, or just comments, we ask you to come forward at this time, and please identify yourself and give your name to our secretary.
My name's Roger Goodson, I'm the General Manager for Consolidated Utility. You know, we love our partnership that we have with not just the county fire department, but the municipal fire departments, but as you know, But as you know, you know, we got in this business 55 years ago just to try to get residents in the county water. So those original mains and things that we put in back then could not handle the fire, the fire flows and everything that, that they're being asked to, to handle now. But as Josh has stated, we have done a good job, and, and to the tune of about $10 million a year, where we're invested into the system, and it's been able to grow, and we've been able to supply that fire protection. I do want to just throw out some facts, just a few facts from the last year, basically the last 23 months. Every time a, a development comes in, we do a will-serv letter. Alan runs hydraulic models, lets you know what the fire flow is going to be, if it's going to handle things, just for your knowledge, and that's all I'm giving is facts. The total, total number of lots in the last 23 months would have covered 5,134 lots. The lots that would have met 1,000 gallon per minute requirement were 2,112, or 41% of them. That means 59% would not have. The lots that would have met 500 gallons per minute is just under 4,300, or 84% of them. So those are just facts, okay? And, and that's all I'm telling, I'm not for or against, we're going to do what the county asks us to do, it's just going to take us years to get there. We can't change all the piping and, and everything at one time, so, really, that's all I, I really had, just wanted to get some facts out there. As far as the ones that may have to be sprinkled, that's going to be an additional charge, probably maintenance and, and, and cost, not just for us, but future developments. Larger meter, we actually, a few years ago, and if there's any developers or whatever in here, they know we went to ductile iron pipe, mainly because of saddles that had to go on PVC mains. Those saddles are about 50% of what we're going back to fix. If we go to a larger tap with a sprinkler system, we'll have to put saddles back on, even the ductile iron pipe, and so now we're long-term maintenance. But those are just facts, that's all I'm saying. And as CUD, we, we appreciate the opportunity to provide to the county, and we're here for you guys, no matter what you do. I'll answer any questions, or no, my three minutes is probably up.
Hold on a minute, we have a question right there.
Tried. I tried.
I knew, I'd put you on spot.
I know.
So, of, of the percentage, 1,000 GPM, 500 GPM, of the 84%, so you've got 16% left. Are those of the houses that would have been sprinkled? Would had to have been sprinkled? Or where, where does, where does that 16% go?
So that 16% would be either, because these are just will-serv letters, so it doesn't mean they've actually been built.
Okay.
And that they're, they're going to develop it. Some of the developers may have pulled those plans because they couldn't get the 500, or some of them are going to need to be sprinkled.
But that's your only option, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name's Chris Jensen, I'm here tonight representing Home Builders Association of Central Tennessee, previously known as the Rutherford County Home Builders Association. I'm also the owner of Jensen Quality Homes, and my office is about 300 feet behind me, 109 East Main Street. First off, I'd like to thank each of you for your time, energy, and dedication that you give to our county, it is truly appreciated. Obviously, we're here tonight to discuss fire hydrants, also a byproduct with the regulation of residential fire sprinklers. We've discussed sprinklers at length before, and we've had many of those discussions here as well. If you want to know more, please feel free to reach out, as I really can only fit so much into an allotted bit of time. The short of sprinklers is that smoke detectors save lives. Sprinklers are expensive, and they're going to save some property, but they're also going to do damage to property. And that's when it's doing its job correctly, when it's not even considering when things go wrong, which they inevitably do. Regulatory changes always affect the market. We get hit with it every which way, and it's constantly driving up costs. Every $1,000 increase on a price of a home puts thousands of people out of the running to be able to afford it. I can't say it's all local regulations, nor just regulations in general. Material prices and inflation, as we all know, has also contributed. But every bit adds to the pile. Every $100 increase in a mortgage eats away at the affordability for a family to get out of an apartment, have a yard for their kids, and an asset for their family. One of the biggest objectives of the Home Builders Association, locally, at the state level, and federally, is home affordability. We're for proper building practices, smart growth, and flourishing communities, but we spend most of our time and effort doing what we can to keep homes affordable. I believe it was the Franklin Mayor's comment I used at this podium years ago, when we were discussing the traffic shed regulations. His public comment was that the people in a city that serves food, clean houses, and the general working class can't afford to live in Franklin or Williamson County. Rutherford County is headed in that direction with every added regulation. I have contractors whose employees don't live in Rutherford County because they can't afford the expense, they commute. I've had other contractors that have moved because it makes more fiscal sense to commute every day than it does to pay the cost of living in Rutherford County. I don't think that's the goal for anyone here tonight, but the fact is that that is something that is going on today. I had noticed, and it was mentioned here tonight on the PowerPoint presentation about this before, that one of the reasons listed to consider this change was looking at six other jurisdictions that are already using these requirements. Looking at Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, Franklin, Brentwood, and Metro Nashville. But if you look at those, that's a city, a town, a city, a city, a city, and a metro. And I don't think any of us also believe that the infrastructure in a county is, or should be, the same as that of a city. Also, I would hope that emulating Franklin and Brentwood is not something we're aspiring to. Two weeks ago, I was at a meeting, we had a guest speaker, and he said something interesting. His largest point was that when he was a representative in the state legislature, he consistently ran into all sorts of proposed legislation that was trying to fix a problem. However, his big question always was, what is the problem? He said, you first need to be able to articulate a specific problem that needs fixing. He commented that a major, majority of the time, no one could articulate what the problem was, yet there was a plethora of solutions floating around. As a result, if you don't know exactly what the problem is, how can we find a solution, let alone the proper solution? I would ask you, before we make a decision to accept, that you know that there is a specific and concise problem that has a specific and concise solution. Also, are there other solutions to the problem? And then finally, is the solution you're looking at today, the best solution to fix a specific problem? The Homeowner, Home Builders Association does not believe that a blanket requirement for exponentially increasing the demand for water, hydrants, or fire sprinklers is the best use of our county's limited resource, both in cost and utility or water availability. Nor do we think that it best services the people in our county that have a need for affordable homes. The Association is always willing to help with input on issues, if any of the commissioners or staff would ever like input. And again, I appreciate you guys' time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I, I appreciate Mr. Jensen's comments about that, and I understand that, but I, but I promise you, our goal was not to sprinkler homes, that's not my goal. My goal is to make, make it more efficient, and more, about water availability for our firefighters. If y'all, whatever y'all decide to do tonight, we'll, we'll live with it, I respect everybody's opinion, everybody should be able to express their opinion, I'm glad Mr. Jensen expressed his. But I would ask, if this, if this fails, I would request that, when we talk about that, Jim, those hydrants are 1,000 foot apart. I would like, if, if, if the water requirement fails, I would like to see us go to 500 feet apart. Because that makes our job so much easier, and makes us, allows us to get on the scene quicker, and connect to water, and go to fight and fire a lot quicker. So I, I would appreciate the 500 feet. If you decide not to go with the, the, the 1,000 foot, I understand that, but I would request that you would keep the 500 feet in there. Murfreesboro actually is 300 feet apart, but if we had 500 feet, it would change our world. Thank you.
Anyone else in our public hearing?
Matt Taylor of SCC 850, Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Did try to look as festive as possible for y'all tonight.[1264.83][1264.83](laughter) I do appreciate all the words, I had the pleasure of getting to sit down with Josh and Larry earlier today, we talked through some of these things. I'm not going to sit up and tell you 1,000 is a bad thing. I, I would ask you, is it a necessary thing? I, I would put it like this, if you compare it to a road, you could lower every speed limit in our county to 15 miles an hour, and probably never have another vehicular death. Put it to drainage, you could put a box culvert everywhere that you need, but do you need something that big? And so, think of it in terms like that. I know that safety, I, like I said, I'm not going to tell you that 1,000 is worse than 500, I cannot sit up here and say that. A couple of things I did hear questions on is what size main, Alan said an eight-inch inside of a subdivision. My clients do not mind putting in that line inside of subdivisions. It's the two miles that you have to improve outside of your subdivision that prevents you from doing that. And so I hope that there's some middle ground between these two, whether it's structures being maybe further apart, or maybe it's that the subdivision installs it so that it can meet 1,000 gallons per minute, once CUD's infrastructure two miles down the road catches up. And I'm not saying CUD does a bad job, they're meeting what they're supposed to, and they've got a lot of county to cover. But I think there's probably some middle ground here that warrants some further discussion to try to come up with those options, more so than just instantly going to the 1,000. I understand that it's adopted, but there is a lot of leeway to the authority of the AHJ inside of that IFC. There's things to be thought about, if you compare it to Murfreesboro, these cities, their setbacks are probably 10 feet between buildings, if not less. We're at least 15 everywhere. If you compare it to our sister counties, the ones that touch us around Middle Tennessee, almost all of those are still at 500. I think Sumner County is the only one that's at 1,000. And Sumner County's retained the 500 if you sprinkle the home. I'm not going to condone or not for sprinkles, I've got no real opinion on that. I'll let other people talk about that. And so if you look at our sister counties, rural areas, they have maintained 500. And that 500 didn't come out of thin air, that goes back to TDEX regulations, probably going back 50 years ago, that engineers set then. So I don't think that that is a number that comes out of thin air, it has been set and maintained for many, many years. So, thank you.
If not, I'm closing the public hearing. Commissioners? Mr. Kush?
Chairman, I'm still confused regarding Jim's comment about distance between fire hydrants. And, you know, I don't, I don't mind perhaps leading to the 500-foot new requirement, but I just want to make sure Josh and Chief, and Jim, and the rest of this body have a clear understanding as how that's defined. So, we want to talk about that for a minute, so we're all on the same page before a motion gets made, maybe, maybe we flush that out real quick. Is that okay with you, Josh?
Certainly.
Okay. Fine. You may want to bring Chief back.
So, when, when we look at these site plans, we measure, obviously, we have the ability to measure distance between hydrants. And so that's one thing we'll look at, we'll look at the distance between each hydrant as, as the truck drives on the roadway, looking for that 500-foot spacing. We'll also look at, and there, there's a number of criteria in Appendix C that, that look at road, distance from the hydrant to the frontage on the, on the lot. So that, that would be the other thing that we look at. In general, for most of what we look at, it'd be about 250 feet from the hydrant, from the road frontage, so, that, that's, we would measure that on the, on the plan, and, and to ensure that it's within those ranges.
Talking about major subdivisions now.
That's correct, sir. Yeah, any other, any other type, it would still fall between that, under that 1,000-foot spacing.
Okay, so, you, you said 250 from the hydrant to the, to the building?
To the road frontage, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, let me, let me get that pulled up.
Okay, because I guess here's what I'm, I'm, I can't picture in my head, I live in a major subdivision, and, you know, 30 feet from the corner of my house is the fire hydrant. It's next to the sidewalk, it's in the right of way. So where does the 250 come in? That's what I don't understand.
That would be the, the ma, the distance from the hydrant to any home on that, on that street. So, we would, would look at it for that maximum, that, at, at any home in that major subdivision is within roughly 250 feet of a hydrant.
Okay.
And then that, the hydrants would be spaced at that 500. So between, from hydrant number one to hydrant number two is 500 feet. Within that, the homes within there would be within 250.
Okay, so you pull, you pull a radius around each fire hydrant of 250 feet.
Essentially, that, that, you could look at that way, but if, if you look at on a, on a given street, you have this hydrant number one, and then hydrant number two, they're 500 feet apart.
Yeah.
Then, all the homes in there, they're going to be within that 500 feet, are going to be within that, typically within that 250-foot.
Okay.
Distance.
Oh, in the words of a old, famous baseball manager, it's deja vu all over again. I remember the conversation quite similar to this, a lot of conversations over a couple of years, and you old timers on the commission, and the planning commission, will remember this, when the sprinkler companies came in. And they got in by, by, through the International Codes Council, which writes the building codes, recommends building codes, and fire codes, electrical codes, that sort of thing. And, one particular year, there was a sudden influx of lots and lots, bus, busloads of firefighters that showed up. And they have a right to attend the meeting, any government employee can, any building official. But somehow, these guys got the funding to come in by the busload. They came into one of the meetings over one of the days, and stayed long enough to pass a vote to overrule the recommending committee proposal on fire sprinklers, and then suggest to the floor, or, or make a motion on the floor, that fire sprinklers be mandated in the code. So it was, despite the recommendations against it. So then we had to suddenly say, okay, this is in the code, the state had to say, we don't have to adopt that part of the code, and gave us the option to do it. We adopted parts of it for certain circumstances. But there was a big discussion for the county commission, I'm sure you guys remember it, it went on and on. So, I kind of see those fingers on this legislation again, it's like, okay, it didn't work the first time, so let's find another way, let's put it in the fire code instead of the building Also see, CUD, from what they're telling me, higher maintenance cost, higher testing, bigger water lines, more water getting dumped out on the ground as they test these things. So, so this is going to affect the rate paid. So this is going to affect the rate payers for CUD, whether you have a fire hydrant or not. I see it's going to affect the taxpayers for Rutherford County, because now you've got fire trucks that have to ride around town, ride around the county, testing these things on a regular basis in order to meet the standards. I believe that if I had my choice, in my neighborhood, I've never seen a fire truck attached to one of those fire hydrants, and there's quite a few of them in there. But I do see them come out and dump water on the ground a lot, testing them. And I'm paying for that, you're paying for that, we all are. If I had to make my choice of what I was going to have to spend my rate-paying dollars for water, and I had to pay, spend my taxpayer dollars on, I'd much rather have more fire trucks than I would have fire hydrants. So that I could get firemen to save my family who's in the house. I don't care much about the house, I'd rather have a truck there. I don't want the trucks out. We could buy several fire trucks for what it's going to cost to implement this, and I'd rather have the fire trucks coming with personnel on them, than have a fire hydrant down the street that's not doing anything. I mean, that's my personal opinion. I just don't see the justification for this myself.
Mr. P.
And I have a question. Now, this would apply to large subdivisions in the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Only, or only large subdivisions in the county?
As it's written, and Doug can clarify, but six or greater lots.
That's correct, six lots or more.
Okay, so, we're, as we're building, as more people move in, more large subdivisions are coming to the county, and those houses are being built closer together, larger houses. And, we're denying those people in the county, in large subdivisions, fire safety that they are getting in the city. This is not going to apply to the small rule, these are, and Bill, he came, and, so if the builders don't build large subdivisions in the county that can't, that does not have the water to maintain it, then we wouldn't have an issue. But we continue to build the large subdivisions in the county, that if we don't pass this, will be a fire risk that pay higher insurance, because they're a higher fire risk than those that live in the city.
Please use your mic, ma'am.
I'm just asking the question, are they a higher fire risk? Because we've been getting along just fine with 500 gallons at 20 PSI all this time. Why would they be a higher fire risk?
I don't have the numbers to know how many fires we have, and...
Please.
I understand the design side, and they're trying to meet the 1,000 gallon per minute flow rates, and then the extent of that work that gets extended back one, two, three miles to meet that. And CUD has made great strides over the years to continue to improve. I grew up in the county as well, and I remember the first volunteer firefighters, and how we've improved over the years. But I'm leaning more toward the spacing, as far as going to a 500-foot spacing, and the reasoning is, is I live in one of those subdivisions that's been around since the early 90s, and the spacing of those fire hydrants was such that one of our neighbors lost their house, and the fire hydrants were 1,000-plus feet away. And we really, they get landscaped around, they get hidden, you know, so, that person, I don't know that it would have made a difference if it had a hydrant close or not. But the neighbors, including myself, pitched in, and we bought one, and put it in that 500-foot realm, so we reduced that spacing to benefit all of our neighbors. So, I see the benefit of that, and I'm an advocate for the 500-foot spacing, but I understand the challenges behind the 1,000 gallon per minute, and being able to meet that onto the design side. Hopefully, you don't have more than one structure on fire at a time, to need multiple hydrants running to require that 1,000 gallon per minute. So, I'm more of an advocate for the spacing.
Is it just the spacing, though? See, the way this is written tonight, it's both. And the situation that Josh is in, from my understanding, all he's trying to do is uphold the law. This has been adopted already. But CUD's telling us we can't comply with this without forcing sprinklers. We're not ready, I'm not ready for that, I'll just say I'm not ready for that. Spacing makes sense, but I would rather see us abide by the law and go back and see what it takes to pull this piece out that we know we can't meet anyway, without forcing sprinklers.
I guess what we're discussing, can Mr. Christensen weigh in to whether we can piece this together, or do we have to take it all or none? Or, I know I deal with traffic, manual uniform traffic control devices, and that's adopted by law, the current version every year is this much in the same way that you have to abide by, as it's stated.
Josh, just before I answer that, clarify for me, in the current fire code that's been adopted by the county, is the 500-foot spacing already in there?
Is.
Okay. Well, obviously, it's the will of this body, on what they want to do for their subdivision regulations. From a legal perspective, and I think Mr. Sanders emphasized this on the first go-around, that having cohesiveness between both your fire code and your subdivision regulations is a goal that we need to attain in some fashion. So whatever happens here tonight, and whatever decision's made, might need to have a dual application to changing the fire code. In other words, if tonight, what Mr. Sanders has presented to you is not fully adopted, but only a portion of it is, we might need to come back at some later date for the Board of Commissioners and change the fire code again, right? Because if this board only adopts the 500-foot spacing requirement, but does not adopt the 1,000 gallon per minute flow requirement, you've still got a conflict between your fire code and your subdivision regulations. So it may be that we would have to amend the fire code to take out the 1,000 foot, or, excuse me, the 1,000 gallon per minute flow, and then you'd have everything jiving. Does that make sense? Now, if the board were to simply adopt both, everything what Mr. Sanders is proposing, then you would have no conflict at all.
And I think ultimately, to answer what Nick is saying, to answer the question, I think you can pick and choose.
Yes.
You could say, we're gonna, we want to adopt this portion, we want to study this a little more. You could come back and say, we want to study the whole thing more. You could adopt everything. I mean, I don't think it's all or nothing, ultimately.
Chief?
I went before the commission and asked them to adopt the Appendix B. Reason for that is dealing with Matt and them, whenever you sprinkle a commercial building, whether you adopt the code, we were giving them 50%, but when you adopt the code, it allows for 75% reduction in the fire flow if they sprinkle a building, which is, this was commercial, I was thinking about commercial buildings. That was my purpose of doing it, because that way, when Matt deals with us, he deals with the city, Smyrna, whoever, it's all the same code, is the reason I did that. Maybe just to help him out, and also give him a 75% reduction off of what the flow would be. The only thing I see what we do here, if y'all would pass the 500 feet, then we can go back before the commission and just exclude the residential part of that code. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, if that was the, if that was the will of this body, then in order to meet the consistency between the two documents, my recommendation would probably be to amend the table that addresses residential construction, and change that from the, what it states to basically where it would just factor in the 500 GPM. That would be the most logical way to fix that.
So, Larry, you would need to change the fire code before we consider changing the subdivision regulations?
No, sir. I don't think you'd have to do that. I don't think you'd have to do that, because you have an existing fire code now, and it's predicated upon what happens here tonight. So, I think you make, you can make a decision tonight, and then next, change the fire code to come in line to whatever decision is made tonight.
And I believe I would have to go before the steering committee, if I'm correct. That's who I carried it for last time. But that would be, I mean, I kind of got myself in a pickle back when we first passed the fire code, if Jim remember. And we, because it required sprinkling of homes, and we just took the residential part out of that. So I think we just revamped the code where that doesn't, the 1,000 gallon per minute, we remove that from the residential code, it would apply for commercial, but we remove that from residential code, and then we'd have the 500 feet spacing. And, but my understanding, Jim, that's 500 feet from this hydrant to that hydrant, as the water line runs. That'd be my suggestion.
That's correct. So, Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion? You may make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, send it to full commission, the 500-foot fire hydrant, as the amendment in the appendices in the fire code says, and not the 1,000 gallon per minute.
Okay. Does that have to go to the full commission?
It doesn't. So, I think his motion's proper in the respect of what he's requesting, of what change needs to be made to the subdivision regulations, right? Because that's what's before this body. So, Commissioner, I think if you just, if you just take your motion and say that what you're asking is to amend the subdivision regulations of Rutherford County to only decrease the spacing of the fire hydrants from 1,000 down to 500 feet, but you're not wanting to amend it to increase the fire flow requirements from 500 gallons to 1,000 gallons, that's, I think, the proper motion of what you're trying to do.
Okay, that's what you want. Yeah, what he said, that's it.
And Doug, was there another part of the, was there another part of the proposal that's unrelated to this at all, to the fire flow stuff?
Well, let me wait till, give me a second, real quick, and then, I do have some questions. Okay. Okay, so Trey, did you, okay, very good.
And Trey Gooch, seconds.
All right, I just, I want to, I guess, really, I want to clarify, okay? So what you're asking is, or, I'm sorry, what your motion is, is that we're taking the 1,000-foot spacing, which is currently in our regulations, and taking that down to 500. Now, are you wanting to do that just for the larger subdivisions, as we've been talking about, or are you wanting to do that just across the board? Because what we had proposed was for subdivisions of six lots or greater, the closer spacing, okay? So, as I'm understanding this, and correct me if I'm wrong, what we're talking about now is for subdivisions of six lots or greater, the fire hydrant spacing would go down to 500 feet, and in subdivisions that have five lots or less, we would keep what we have now, which is 1,000 feet.
Yes.
We're not talking about the fire flows or anything, so just so we all understand that.
Right.
Now, something else I just want to throw out there, just to make sure everybody understands, these are only for what are considered subdivisions, okay? If somebody comes in and has 50 acres of land and tracks them into, you know, 10-acre tracks, or if they have 100 acres and they go 10, 10, 10-acre tracks, boom, 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 everybody has road frontage, those don't count as subdivisions. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, because state law, it's anything less than five acres. So, I mean, there are some nuances to that, if you're on private easements, I'm not going to get into all that, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear with what we're talking about.
Got that.
Does that also need to include, I know that fourth paragraph, staff proposed changing to current requirement for residential sprinkler systems, do we need to loop that into all this as well?
Well, I mean, that's, I guess, up to you. If, that was part of our, and I think that kind of gets back to what Nick was talking about.
Yeah, I would probably pass on this motion now, and then have a discussion about that change, right there, and do a separate motion for that.
All right, we have a motion, and a second, and I'm going to ask for a voice vote.
Could I make a comment before we vote, if I could, please? International fire codes are there for a reason. We're making some exemption to that. And I'm concerned that this exemption is permanent, where we probably should be working toward that at some point in time, some point in time. We're not Murfreesboro, we're not Smyrna, but we're coming, we're getting close to that. Commercial industrial development is happening in the county more often than it is happening in any incorporated area in our county at this particular point in time. They're there for a reason. And I know we're making exemptions to that right now, I know we are. But shouldn't that be a standard that we should work for at some point in time? So, I'm thinking as we continue to grow, and we will continue to grow, that we should be working toward that. And there should be some type of plan put in place for us to do that. And I'm looking for some type of nod from CUD that says that's the plan, long-term plan for us to do that? That pretty much answers my question, but, you know, I'm concerned that, I heard our firefighters say that they're concerned about the safety of the citizens, and safety, concerned about the safety of our firefighters. And we're making exceptions to that, and I understand that. We don't have the capabilities to do these other things right now, but we should be, long-term, working toward that. And I think that's what we, as a planning commission, have been talking about, with long-term comprehensive plans and other things, that's what we should be doing. And once again, that's just this planning commissioner and county commissioners' opinion, that that's there for a reason. And I know that maybe we can't meet those standards, but by gany, we ought to be looking to do that, and meet those standards at some point in time, somewhere down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I agree with Commissioner Phillips, and I look at this as a step toward the future, and I want to keep improving and not hold up.
Mr. Chair, is it possible to ask CUDs if this affects? I mean, it's kind of a different animal, a little bit different than what we talked about earlier, when we were kind of searching for their opinion on how this affects them. I mean, is it possible to get comment, if this changes anything about his earlier comments, or any other effects it may have?
We can, we haven't voted, but we can.
Good evening again. The question was, how is this going to affect us, just changing, adding, making the fire hydrants go to 500, and not changing the flow requirements? It will double the amount of hydrants going in a subdivision that we maintain, and paint, and grease, and have auxiliary valves too, so that's additional valves. So, yes, there'd be an increase there. You know, we're, we are, we're good with helping fire flows, I mean, that's our job. And I believe, you know, Mr. Phillips there, Commissioner Phillips, you know, there's a way that down the road, we can meet, maybe yearly, with fire marshal, look at our hydraulic system with them, and continue to keep improving, because that's our goal, is to continue to improve the whole system for everybody. We just can't do it right now. So, but yeah, how does it affect us? You know, we're going to have more hydrants, but to maintain and take care of. So, that's the bottom line. Is that what you needed?
Thank you, sir. Calling for the vote, call the roll, please.
Jim Everwater? Jeff Phillips?
I guess, yes.
Mike Kush?
No.
Lee Bogel? Charlotte P. Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones? Chip Pinion?
No.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Carries?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Motion carries. Even with that.
I did want to vote.
Sorry about that.
Motion carried, and I believe we have something else now to discuss.
Yes, sir. Well, this just goes back to the change that we were proposing to make. Well, this just goes back to the, the change that we were proposing to make, raising the mandatory sprinkler requirement from anything greater than two lots to anything greater than five. So basically three or more is what it's currently at if a waiver is required. That would go up to six or more if a waiver is required. I mean, we can keep doing it the way we've been doing it. We were just changing it for consistency with everything else that we're doing for five lots or greater. Or, I'm sorry, five lots or less versus six lots or greater.
So it's currently at three, the proposal is going up to six?
Correct.
And why, why has this come before us?
Well, again, we were just looking to keep everything consistent with proposing, everything we've been changing, everything we've been talking about, it's been predicated on anything five lots or less, you go one direction, anything six lots or, six lots or greater, you go the other direction. Really it was changing just to be consistent with that. I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary that we do it. It was just for consistency. You know, it does loosen the restrictions just a little bit by about three lots.
And Doug, if I may, and Commissioner can kind of address that as well. That was also done kind of in, in a kind of holistic approach to the increase in fire flow requirements to give some flexibility, you know, kind of make some concessions here on the number of lots that we look at to make a subdivision sprinkler versus if we're going to go increase on that GPM, give some, kind of some relief on the current sprinkler ordinance. That was kind of, I would say, almost part of the package.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Given, given the movement by this body, it's certainly not necessary to pursue it.
And like I said, we can leave it alone for right now. Just consider that as part of the larger discussion that Commissioner Phillips was discussing earlier. So it's up to you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. So does this mean if earlier we changed the number of lots to six or more lots or less than six lots, you can do approvals? But now some of those would still come to us for waivers? Is that correct?
Well, right, yeah. Anything with a waiver, I can't do administratively anyway. Doesn't matter if it were two lots, four, five, doesn't really make any difference. That would still have to come before you.
Right, but now we would, I think maybe the purpose of the five lots or less is to have fewer small items come before this commission and handle those in-house.
Correct.
But if we kept it the same, we would still be getting a lot of smaller submissions.
Well, only the ones that have fire hydrant waivers, but you would see those anyway. That wouldn't make any difference, yeah.
Mr. S.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve this revision to our regulations.
Second. Have a motion and a second, brother discussion. Please call the roll.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Chip Penyon.
Second.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Pettus Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Have we pretty well got it covered now?
I think so, yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner P.
I'm not trying to, I just have a question. Since we approved the 500 feet but not the 1,000 gallons per minute, at what point, the rate that we're growing and trying to be proactive instead of reactive, at what point will the fire department be able to come back when needed to ask for the 1,000 gallon per minute?
Well, and Josh, feel free to jump in anytime. But I think something that Mr. Goodson said a little earlier is resonating with me as far as having more conversations with them as far as what their long-range plans look like, maybe making a presentation to the planning commission as to what that might look like and then kind of taking our cues from that, okay? Seeing where their direction is going, what direction we want to go and how do we get there? You know, it's not going to be an overnight process, obviously, but I think that's a good, a good way to approach it. Josh, I'll...
I concur, yeah. I think that we need to have those meetings. I think the better that, understanding that this body has of where our infrastructure is allows you guys to make better decisions. So certainly in my role, I would embrace the opportunity to meet with CUD on a more regular basis and quit me to report back to you guys on those matters as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Josh. Is the 1,000 gallons per minute in the body of the code or is it in appendices?
It's in the current adopted appendices. It's Appendix B specifically, yes, sir.
But that's the section that was adopted.
It is adopted, yes, sir.
Josh, from my understanding of that, the appendices and even this, what we're reading is a tool. It's not necessarily, I mean, water flow's not an exact science, that the way I read that is just, it's a tool that helps us to make these decisions. Is that, is that the way I read it?
Not specifically, sir. In the case of the fire code, when you adopt the appendices, it does become codified as law. So, and Nick can certainly speak to that more eloquently than I can probably, but once, once adopted, yes, those tables are a tool, but that is, that is what is enforceable at that point, once adopted.
Right, but you just don't have to adopt certain portions of the code.
That's correct. And we've, we've gone through and adopted the portions of the code that, that...
That we feel like we can either beat or feel like it's best for the county.
Okay. All right. Old business. What do you think? Staff reports and other business?
Just a couple of brief items. As we do every December, based on our bylaws, we do have to nominate a nominating committee. It's redundant, I know, but this is for chair and vice chair for calendar year 2023. We've reached out to three of our planning commissioners, Mr. Aberwater, Ms. P., and Mr. Whitworth, and they have all agreed to serve in that capacity. They will make their recommendation to the planning commission at the January 23 meeting. So we just need a motion to appoint them to that committee.
Motion made and second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose?
Just one last item. We are coming, this is our last meeting for this year. Of course, we're coming to the end of an eventful year and I have a feeling 2023 will be just as, if not more, eventful than what we've experienced. But I just want to say thank you to you all. It's a, it truly is a pleasure to serve with you, with the commissioners, with all the staff here, Nick as well, does such a great job, you know, advising our body. So just with that, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and be safe during that time.
And our next planning commission meeting will be 6 o'clock PM, Monday, January the 9th. In fact, I'll see you next year at that meeting. Merry Christmas. We're adjourned.